All right. Good afternoon. A couple of years ago, y'all, council included drainage in the top priorities with infrastructure. So with that, we have done a little bit of work and we have made some advancements within the drainage issues that the city of San Angelo faces. Most notably, if you go into the East Angelo Drawl along Bell Street, as part of the Bell Street Improvement Project, we enhanced that crossing right there, made it much more passable during rain events. So that was number one of the year 2000 Master Drainage Plan. So we got that one accomplished along with the Avenue P detention basin that we spoke about earlier that is just doing phenomenal in its results along Avenue P. We've had a couple of rain events to test it and I think it's performing absolutely great. So. And currently in progress is the College Hills Drainage Improvements. We were graciously given the ARPA money to make those improvements along with that project. And so those underground infrastructures and improvements in the roadway at the Red Arroyo Crossings are being performed right now or being put in. So it's progress along that. It's moving very, very well. Really, we're waiting on the manufacturers of the box culverts is the only reason that we're taking a little bit of time putting getting that infrastructure in. So I do want to make a quick note. It's not on your screen here, but an example of drainage improvements that are on the cusp as we continue our conversations here in just a little bit as an example, is an in-house project that we did at the end of Foster Road, improving that drainage. We talked about it earlier. Councilman Hebert and I and my assistant director were out there yesterday just seeing the effects of that. And that was a completely in-house project that had a tremendous effect on a neighborhood that was feeling the burdens of that drainage issue. So completely in-house, the guys did a great job there. But those are the type of improvements that we're going to discuss moving forward as some options that we want to take care of with some additional resources that we're going to be asking you guys for. So we did as well complete the update to the Master Drainage Plan. We got that one completely wrapped up and we reranked 36 problem areas within the city. This was important so that we could start pulling down some of those grant opportunities. Here recently with the Region 9 Upper Colorado flood planning region, recently started developing some grants and there's some opportunities there. But we needed this Master Drainage Plan updated to identify those projects and have them in a plan to apply for those grants. So we are looking forward to doing that and hopefully pulling down some of that money to make those improvements. As you see there on the screen, there is however $60 million in deficiencies just in those top 10 CIP problem areas. So it's 60 million for the top 10 and some additional money in the additional 26 projects remaining there.
You tackled three major ones or in the process of because certainly the Bell Street, the Avenue P and College Hills, major issues.
Those were major issues and that's the reason those weren't necessarily hitting the list on this current MDP, Master Drainage Plan, because we did take care of those in our recent projects. Moving on to the streets update, as you all well know, $80 million over the course of 10 years, we just issued the fourth of our $5, $16 million allocation. So we have one more to go in that. In 2024, we'll see that issuance. As an annual operating and maintenance budget that we that council gave us back in 2015, we have about $3.5 million for seal coating and preservation techniques. That was in order to accomplish council's goal of seal coating every street every eight years. And 2023 is the final year of that eight-year program. And I'm very happy to say that we accomplished that goal by 2023. So very proud and very thankful for you guys giving us the opportunity to make that happen by giving us the resources we needed to do that. So thank you. We also have an additional $500,000 that was given to us at that time that we utilized for not only crack sealing ahead of that seal coat process, but also doing a little bit more in pottol repair and small construction projects that we're able to do in-house. So we are limited on manpower and issues. So those guys worked really, really hard to make sure that they're prepping the streets and taking care of what they can do. That doesn't constitute a major reconstruction or something that's beyond what we're allowed to do in-house right now. So. And then a couple of years ago, or last year actually, council, y'all also gave us that .006 portion of the property tax rate to do some additional street maintenance projects. That nets us about $340,000 to $400,000 a year. So we did not spend any of that money last year. We're kind of banking it for to make a good bang for your buck project. Hopefully try to score some of that for a matching fund on a grant or something like that to maximize those dollars. So right now, we have about $712,000 at the anticipated end of year fund balance for this year. We went over a whole bunch of these, or Shane did, earlier in the CIP project. So I'm not going to overburden you with those again. Again, just Southwest Boulevard is still active and College Hills Boulevard is active for us. Coming, we have Howard Street is about to kick off. We got the bids received on that. They were a little higher than what we had budgeted, but not as high as what we were necessarily anticipating in today's environment. So we will be able to take care of Howard Street. Jackson Street is coming up. That will be starting this year as well. And then Edmund Glen and 29th Street is the next project that you're going to be seeing along with Cristoville or Chadburn Street, I'm sorry, from Seventh Street all the way to 43rd and hopefully encompassing that S-curve if we can get text coordination on that little piece of property there.
So when you say it's in design, it's funded, but it's still in design state?
So what funded and in design means is we actually have construction dollars earmarked for those projects. Unfunded means we want it. We're working on design or the design is complete, but we just don't have the construction money necessarily right now to do it. So it's sitting on the shelf waiting for those opportunities to present themselves. As we look at our current funding sources, just to give you all a real quick snapshot as y'all are looking at this and discussing it, our street rehabilitation money, $80 million in bond funding is what we have, that $4 million in annual operating money, as well as that property tax allocation of about $400,000 a year. I did want to note that y'all gave us a grant administrator position last year to the budget process and we have absolutely been utilizing that position. She's been phenomenal for us so far. We did get a SS4A grant for $500,000 that we're utilizing to build an action plan that will let us apply for some construction dollars in coming years, but we had to have this action plan taken care of first. And we are currently about to wrap up. On June 5th, the TASA or the set aside grant applications are due. So we're tying up the loose ends on those and submitting those for those applications and those projects.
Are those the $20 million?
That's the $20 million and the 1.2. Yes, ma'am. And then we also have about 11 grants that are kind of on our high priority list that we're really watching pretty hard for the NOFOs to come out, the Notice of Funding Opportunities. And those are, you know, dedicated toward our infrastructure drainage. Sunset Lake is on one of those that we're watching to try to find some money to do that. So and then 23 more just general grants on our list that seem like they would be applicable to different projects that we would have coming in. And then also, last year, we found, I think we kind of finalized the discussion about the street use fee and got some direction from you guys on that. So that's on the horizon as well potentially.
Questions from council?
We were just wondering where the street use fee was and popped up on the next slide.
Thank y'all.
All right. We will move into the water utility update. I love this picture that Brian was able to come up with on this. This is the overhead of the two new clear wells being constructed is what this is. So this has been a very neat process and to watch these two nuclear wells go together.
Yeah, Tom Thompson thought it was Thunderdome.
Tina Turner Redrow. In respect to Tina.
There you go.
This has been a great project. So and great to watch from a public works standpoint.
A couple hundred feet?
Yeah. It's amazing. It's amazing project. So as we're going on, just kind of give you all a brief update of where we are from current water supplies. As of May 1, OH Ivy and the Hickory, 25 months. Unfortunately, OC Fisher only has a day of water, one day of water in it. So that doesn't count or calculate. And then our other sources, Twin Bute Lake Nazworthy combined with the Hickory of 13 months give us a total of 38 months of water currently. Our conservation measures don't kick in until the 24 months. Hopefully with the rains we've been getting, that will alleviate some of this and it'll extend this 38-month period out. So keeping our fingers crossed there. Average daily usage, we can continue to see upward trend in this. Saw a little bit of last year, I'm not sure if we just gave up on some of our yards and things like that in conservation mode. But again, we did in '21, but here in '22, we are seeing usage increase again.
So it's '22, '23?
We don't have the final numbers yet on that. So we're still working through that. We can look at some trends moving forward if you'd like. Water use, just kind of let everybody know where we use the most of our water. The majority of our water is residential, 12% commercial, 16 institutional, and 3% industrial. Quick update on Hickory. We're talking about water supply. This is where we're adding an additional five wells out at the actually at the well field itself. We are moving very well with this project. We they are working on the last well, drilling the last well as we speak. They're about halfway through that process. They should be through drilling and the drilling should be completed hopefully within the next 30 days. And we will, the drilling portion of the contract, Contract One, hopefully will be finalized, complete, and everything sent to the state and finalized mid-July. That's our timeframe on Contract One. Contract Two with PLW Waterworks, we'll be tying in all of the new facilities out at the well field, tying all those into the pump station, increasing the pump capacity at the pump station, as well as rehab rehabilitating some of the existing wells there and adding some backup generators to the project there. Also part of this, again, just to let everybody know, the goal of this is to get us from the 8 million gallons per day to 12 million gallons per day capacity for water off of this. And then, of course, part of this also is the update to the to the clear wells, the two new clear wells there that we're building at the plant and also the Hickory Treatment Plant, the part of that for the upgrades in the actual treatment building itself for the Hickory. Projects moving along well. Total overall construction probably roughly 60 to 70% complete. I put 60% on there just because that's about two weeks ago when I was going through all this. That's about where about what we were looking at. Guys are making great headway on this project. It's moving along well. Contra River Water Project, we went over this a little bit earlier. So I'm not going to dwell on it. But one, we have received the discharge permit and currently working through the bed and banks permit. And we'll be, again, we saw the we saw the the numbers for what some of the improvements were going to be on this, the cost will be for this project in the going through the CIP. So we're just looking at that. So other part of this is from a water supply perspective is West Texas Water Partnership currently.
Where are we on that?
Working through the city managers of the three cities are working together to start working through the next phase, which will be the actual production phase of this to just try to.
Last time we met, Teresa was going to pull together.
Well, where we are right now, so the city manager of Midland retired a couple of weeks back. So we have the new interim in the position at this point. City manager of Abilene and myself will be scheduling to actually go and visit in Midland next week to have some discussions and have a better understanding of where they are. It's been a challenge, Mayor. I mean, as far as trying to move forward with the project, I know that Teresa's worked on the preliminary agreement that the city manager are reviewing and going through at this point to see if there's any changes that need to be made. Prior to the city manager of Midland leaving, he had reviewed the contract, but we really didn't have anything solid from them saying, hey, we agree with this.
Did you sign it?
Yeah, not yet. No, no, it won't be signed until actually everyone's in agreement and we take it back to the council members. But those details still need to be worked through. But again, we are hopeful that we can pull everybody together by next week and have a sit-down in Midland to go over that agreement and see if there's any qualms or any changes that need to happen on it.
We all signed at one point. There was a signature from all three cities.
Yeah.
Your nap, about two years ago.
Yeah, for the water itself. Yes, ma'am. So the city of San Angelo would be receiving the 5,000 acre feet of water from the agreement itself. But we do need to work out the details as far as moving forward, the line, the starting the actual project from Fort Stockton, I mean from Fort Stockton. So again, a lot of detail still needs to be worked out, Mayor. I'd rather not say much more after until after we meet with the city managers, have a chance to meet with Teresa. Teresa is a trusted attorney working on the on the project. And I think all the city managers agreed that we're good with her working out the preliminary parts of it. And then we'll work out the details to get that finalized and sent to the city council members.
All right. Moving along, just wanted to, we touched on this a while ago on the CIP, but just to kind of give council an update on the sewer project. Again, it did come in. Both contracts came in with McKees Construction during the pipeline, Austin Engineering during the lift station. Both contracts came in at 35.9 million, which was a whole lot better than the 50.4 that we were expecting. So we were very glad to see that. Again, we should hopefully begin this project in the next 60 days or less if we can get by with it. And hopefully, again, it's a 24-month project. Just give you a quick update on the customer service inspections as we're looking for any cross-contamination issues out there. Again, not going to read all these off, but you can see that the guys, the four guys that we have assigned to this task have been very.
We approved three CSIs.
Three CSIs and the supervisor. And all of them are certified. So all of them are certified. So not only the three inspectors that are out there on the front lines every day, but also, well, their supervisor as well is licensed. So he can go out in the field and do these inspections as well. So but again, these guys have been really busy. Again, we've gone through the majority of these already. If there's any questions on those, some of these are in conjunction with the street recon projects. Of course, with some of the other ones, as far as the shallow wastewater improvements, another one that we didn't mention a while ago on the CIP because it's not necessarily the CIP, is the water hydraulic model that we're working with with our consultant to get the new the new model out, which will help us kind of determine where the water flows and how everything is going through our distribution system and also help us as we start looking into our needs in that northeast of town that we talked about earlier with the elevated storage tank. I think all the rest of those, we already covered. And then I wanted to bring up rates and fees as we look into the future. Now, I'm going to preface this right here as saying that I'm not asking for any increases in rates or fees this year or in this budget cycle. So but again, as we're looking out into the future, I think, you know, we've talked about this and the mayor's talked about it, you know, trying to be proactive and look at what's going on out in the future and what we need to do as we move forward. And I've kind of broken this up into three different phases and kind of kind of outlay what my thoughts are and get y'all's feedback on it again. But as we look at look at some things, we have the stormwater fee from the drainage side of things. Now, stormwater and drainage are two different things in our minds in public works. What we think about when we talk about the existing stormwater fee that we have now is the O and M that we do that is to cover the quality component that was state mandated or federally and state mandated component of it back in 2010. And so and that fee has not, since its inception, has not been increased. We've been, it's been the exact same rate. And so that's something with especially with the inflation rates that we've seen recently, something that we cannot sustain a whole lot longer without seeing some kind of increase on that O and M side of it, on the on the quality component side of it as well. So we are going to have to, we are going to have to start talking about a fee increase on that side as well. But what I wanted to bring up today is the drainage. As you know, we've talked about some of the other aspects of the of our Master Drainage Plan that we created. Patrick talked about the Region 9 Flood Planning Group and some of those opportunities. And with this, as we are creating the the region flood plan through the Texas Water Development Board, a lot of our master drainage plan, since it was a brand-new master drainage plan, we've been able to incorporate a lot of those projects into the region plan. And by doing so, that allows us all those projects that were incorporated into the regional plan to be available eligible for Texas Water Development Board funding, whether that's low-interest loans, grant opportunities, all of those things. It makes us eligible for that. What one of the bad things is, is that currently there's no designated funding source to deal with the drainage portion of things, the flooding that we're seeing out there. There's not any designated funding for that.
Hasn't been much designated raining going on either. So.
We have been a little shy on that for the last year. Yes, ma'am. So and then there's kind of as we're looking at this, and this has kind of been brought up recently, since the inception of our plan, the stormwater ordinance in 2010, a lot of the residential areas around town, especially on these, some of the outlying areas that we're seeing have been developed in the last five to six, seven years, were already platted prior to our stormwater ordinance plan going into going into effect. And so now we're starting to see, now that these pre-platted areas are starting, have filling up and they're being completed and built out, we're looking at developers and home builders looking into new areas of town or new areas to develop and plat. And so and as they do those, part of the requirements is to for stormwater detention. So they're retaining the water, the extra water that they're creating on that property for, so it doesn't run off and create issues downstream. But with that comes the long-term.
Let me ask you a question. So when you talk about the stormwater situation and it was being created in 2010 that we had to deal with it, does it not allow you on already designed plats to be able to go back in and ask for revision of that plat based off of the 2010 mandated stormwater drainage?
No, ma'am. We were not, we were not allowed to go back in and force somebody that already had a plat in place to replat for drainage. But one of the things that we're moving moving forward into the future, and one of the a lot, well, quite a few other developers have brought to the city's attention, is that as they're having to, you know, they're, we have not, because we did not have any drainage funding available. And of course, it really hasn't been a big issue up until now because some of these older lots, they didn't have to conform to those. And so we weren't seeing a lot of detention basins being built in some of these larger development areas. But as these new new areas come on, they're developers are being required to build these detention basins. Well, the the long-term maintenance and upkeep of these detention basins is becoming an issue. One, you know, the developer, once they, once they build out and they get through, you know, their kind of interest in that development is gone. And so there's not necessarily an interest for them to maintain that pond for eternity, basically. And so and then the other option is create an HOA. Well, HOA is probably in all, all development areas is probably not one of those things. It's a desirable thing to have, especially quite a few of those developments. And so they have come to the city looking for the city, basically, if what can we do to help out for long-term care, maintenance of these facilities? And so that's kind of been an issue. And one, we currently do not have the funding or the staffing to be able to start taking on detention basin after detention basin after detention basin for maintenance. We, I mean, we have taken two or three detention basins that back up to basically the Red Arroyo or something like that where it is, where it, we believe that from the city standpoint, it's critical for us to be able to own and maintain those structures because of the impact that they could have downstream. And so we want to make sure that those specific ones stay intact. But there's others that are in town that aren't so impactful that we have not taken on the responsibility of maintenance on it or accepted those into the city. And so developers are being, trying to figure out long-term what to do and how to, what they can do basically, or how they're going to deal with maintenance long-term on these.
That's a catch-22.
It is. And we believe, and we believe long-term that we will probably see some of those those basins basically, or those detention basins actually forfeited or whatever. And we're going to have to take them on anyway. But as we kind of look through and make a long story short, as we're going through and we start talking about, we're talking about rates and fees, we're talking about water rates and the, you know, our long-term water needs and development and to continue progressing those, Contra River Project, all those things, the skyrocketing chemical costs, that has, chemicals are, chemicals are eating us up. I mean, we're, we've seen chlorine tripling price. We've, we just got bids back, polymer bids back that y'all are going to see on the next, next council meeting.
I think I'm going to read the next council meeting from everything that's said today. I think.
And so, you know, we're going to bring those and, you know, a contract, you know, a new contract for those. And we already know that they said they're going to go up again in April. The costs are going to go up again in April. So they're already telling us that, that, you know, our pricing is not going to be good six months from now. And so.
People are taking advantage of the situation.
Or a year from now, or whatever. Yeah. Or a year from now. We already know that, you know, we aren't going to be able to meet these prices again. So and then another thing that we have looking, that we're going to have looking, especially on the water side, is the PFOS and emerging contaminants issues that we're going to be dealing with. The EPA has set the limit, .4 parts per trillion on PFOS, which is the minimal detectable limit for PFOS. So basically, if you.
Is that the fire retardant stuff or the fire?
Fire retardants, styrofoams, those type of things, the forever chemicals. And, you know, by setting that limit, basically at the detectable limit means at some point in time, we will have to be treating for that. Well, I mean, the only way to treat for that, you know, is through an RO system or some kind of membrane system. And so massive, you know, it's going to take a lot of money, you know, in the future to deal with those, making upgrades to the water treatment plant. So just things that we have to keep in mind as we're looking forward. Same thing with sewer rates as we're looking forward. So again, I'm not asking for, right now, I'm not asking for this. But what I would like to do is basically step back and and do a basically another water rate study that we did a few years ago, except one, I want to not only take, take a look at the water rates and the sewer rates and kind of take that long-term cost and look at that, but also want to add drainage in there as well. Start looking at these drainage projects as we're looking at this for the rate study. And again, because the last thing I want to do is have an emergency situation or have something come up, sneak up on us that we're not prepared for. And then all of a sudden, we're trying to, we have to have a rate increase right now and it's a big one or it's a substantial one. Let's take a longer look approach at this and look at this over time to see if we can ease into, ease into these things and try to work, work them through. And so by doing a rate study, we can do that to where we can look at these projects and kind of time them out over time to see what that looks like. And then look at, look at making rate changes very gradually over time to accommodate these, these needs as we, as we're looking at it over time. But again, that would take a rate study to do that. But again, I believe that us looking at that sooner rather than later will benefit us as we look at some of these issues that we have coming up. Again, we know that the, one of the biggest things that is really becoming a hot topic is the PFOS and emerging contaminants issues. And so I think us looking at those now, we know the Contra River Project is going to be fast approaching as we go through the permitting, as we kind of ease into this next phase of the permitting phase with the bed and banks. These things are going to start coming up and we're going to need to move on them sooner rather than later. But again, I don't want us to come up a year from now or 20, 24 months from now and go, oh, my gosh, I need, you know, a 10 or 15% increase today to cover these costs. I'd rather us take a longer-term look at this and ease into those, ease into those numbers versus a big hit all at once.
It's good to raise a red flag. And I think that's what you're doing right now because I don't think you're saying we need to do it for this year's budget cycle.
No, no, we do not.
But what we do need to do is to look at it, as you say, long-term and look what the. But what we do need to do is to look at it, as you say, long-term and look what the rates and fees are. You know, we hear constantly from the citizens that we have the highest cost of water of any city they've ever lived in. And perhaps we do because of where we live and, and what the cost of acquiring the water we need to run our city, um, today and in, for, in the future. So no one denies that the investments we're making, whatever, whatever cost they are, are not needed. They're needed for the long-term viability and the economy of San Angelo, Texas. With that said, we also have to be sensitive towards the citizens, um, and, and, um, what we can possibly do to change the rates and still, um, understand how that converts to covering our needs. And it's got to, we, I get it, we got to look at it. Thanks for raising the red flag, and we'll start taking a look at it in a future projection.
Mayor?
Yes, Karen. It's clear how, how, what the burden is on your departments. Um, I'm curious if you feel like you have the employees in place to accomplish all the things on your to-do list.
Yes, ma'am. There's, there's days, there's days I do and days I don't, uh, you know, and, and I think where we're really starting to see it, it, it's probably on the, the, in the field, the guys in the field are probably, um, are probably where we're starting to see the majority of the stress i- is out the guys in the field. Um, again, we're, we're, the city's growing and, and we're, and we're, with the aged infrastructure and everything else, the need keeps, keeps growing. And so I think, uh, the boots on the ground is probably where we're seeing some of the gap. Uh, of course, you know, we do have, um, we have issues up in, up in the higher levels as well too, uh, maintaining those, but, um.
One of the reasons when they talk about developing plans such as this two thousand and nine plan, the city sprawl, because the more sprawl there is, the greater pressure on the system, not only on the infrastructure, but on people as well. And yet we still haven't taken care of and, and all of the needs in the core of the city in terms of infrastructure, and yet we're adding more and more and more and more and more, which adds more and more and more.
It does.
And so, you know, the, the question becomes strategically, um, how we make sure that, quote, infill projects continue to happen as a, as a strategic plan, so that it doesn't keep weeding, thinning out what we have and, and increasing the expense, not necessarily the first year, the second year, or the third year, but down the road, the cost of maintaining an infrastructure quadruples based off of sprawl.
And that's really, and like I said, I think that's where we are, we are starting to suffer and see, see some of the worst needs is in the, is in the, you know, the rank and file, the, the boots on the ground, folks, the guys that are out in the field doing the, doing the work. You know, we are starting to really see, see that, um, see the need there. I mean, we are, and, and a lot of, it, it is sprawl. We're moving out, we're growing, we're building more streets, we're putting in more water lines, we're putting in more sewer lines, we're seeing more water breaks, um, and so, um, more sewer stoppages. I mean, it, it, the list goes on and on. And so, um, but the guy, the guys in the field are where we could really use some help. Yes, ma'am.
Karen, I do want to mention that, uh, so at the end of this month, uh, city staff directors will submit, uh, requests for FTEs, uh, and they have to justify those requests, uh, as far as why those positions are needed. Uh, we do a thorough review of that for that justification and determine, moving forward, when we come to y'all for the budget to say, hey, we do need these FTEs or no, we're fine. But we are, we do a very good study of that to determine what those, those look like.
Good. Conversation for another time. Got it.
Will be an ongoing conversation.
Yes.
Continue.
Uh, that's, that's it. I was just, basically, I, I just wanted to see if council wanted to entertain a water rate study as, as we're moving into the future. I mean, it, it's a process. It's, it's not something that happens overnight. This is a year-long process, uh, even could be plus-year-long as, as we look at this and, and look at, look at those three areas specifically. Uh, we have, you know, we have put on, you know, requests for qualifications, go through the whole process, all of that. So, as we do that, it is a longer process, something that takes a while. But again, um, I, I'd like to get moving on this sooner rather than later. So, as these things start coming about that we're not caught off guard and, and we're not having to do, uh, anything, uh, that is drastic.
Here's how I would answer that, sooner versus later. So I would say that sooner versus later, we need to move forward and look at something like that. But I would also say that as this is the first day of our hearing about needs of various departments and issues, infrastructure's a key issue and it ought to be a priority for us. But if we wouldn't have to answer you today and through the budget process, we can determine the biggest priorities that we have in terms of, of focusing on the citizen's biggest issue, and that is our infrastructure needs. So, I think it ought to be on our list of things to talk further about, um, and decide priorities in terms of those things. But I don't think we're prepared to answer today based off of this being the first five hours of the budget process.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm, I'll take it, I'll take the opposite approach, Mayor. I, I'm, I'm ready for them to start the process on, on a rate study. It's, it's going to be a year before, before we get there. So, my, my answer to the question, to your question, Shane, is different than the mayor's. Yes, I would like to see you undertake, uh, the, uh, begin the process to go through that study. What, one of my biggest takeaways from today, I'll describe with one word, future. Planning for the future. To me, that's what I'm hearing repeatedly in what the staff has presented to us is we need to do a better job in planning for the future. And to me, this is planning for the future. So I answered the question, yes. The rest of the council can speak for themselves.
I think we have several issues the council will have to address. And as I say, I don't think this is about saying no to this, it's about hearing all of their requests. I mean, I think there was one, a couple slides back in terms of the street use fee that has been brought up. You know, there are several of those issues that I think we owe you answers to. But I think we got to get through the budget process, and that doesn't mean within the next month, we won't be able to say yes or no. But I think what we have to do is go through all of these issues, and at the end of the budget cycle, we can say, move forward on this, but there's lots of requests here. And the future is all a part of it. Yes.
And this, this is not a, this is not a, I mean, it, there, there will be dollars attached to this, but again, they're not, they're not, these are not large number dollars. And so these, these funds are available in the, in the utility, uh, to, to accommodate this study. That they're, the, those, those dollars are already available for this. Uh, but again, I don't need an answer today, I'm just, uh, raising the question, uh, let y'all think about it. And again, as we're moving forward, um, through the budget process, again, working through and again, food for thought, so.
We owe you answers, and we know we do, and I think the, uh, ask is not unreasonable. I just say that today, let's hear everybody, let's talk through everything that's out there. And I think we come back with, you know, as a council, some, uh, objectives and priorities. And I think this is certainly going to be one of the, we got to be looking at it. Water's one of the most important parts to the economy and to the future of this city. And to Tommy's one word, future. It's future, it's future, thank you.
Mayor, uh, I do want to point out something if y'all didn't notice as Shane was talking. Um, we're, he, he was shy about talking about exactly what we need money-wise because we do take very seriously being as conservative as possible, and we understand the citizens, we definitely get that, but we also understand the business aspect of it. And he, he got around to asking for what that need is, and that need is there. And, and you're absolutely right. Right now, we don't have the numbers just yet to justify any real commitment at this point, but we will here in the next, uh, month and a half, uh, and we'll be able to have those conversations. But we just wanted to make sure that y'all are open to that, and obviously y'all are. I mean, and we're glad that y'all are, and at that.
You want the red flag today.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, there's no question that that is the time to do it.
Yep, and there'd be a couple of them raised today. So, again, thank you for, for, for that presentation, Shane. Appreciate it.